We can. I'm calling our board meeting to order at around 5 o'clock. We have, I'm going to acknowledge our meeting's status. Members of the public may directly address the board by attending in-person meetings or submitting a public comment card. The board will not take public comments through the online platform and does not guarantee online streaming should that platform malfunction for any reason. Members of the public are encouraged to share their thoughts and concerns with our board president, Maddie Cloud. At mcloud@petk12.org if they are not able to attend in person. Okay, do we have any public here? We do not on closed session items. We adjourned to closed session. Good evening, everyone. Our meeting is now back in session. Hello. I have a public report out from closed session. We had resolution 2425-42 and we passed it a vote 5-0. Okay onward. We have a site report from McKinley and PACC. So are you coming up separately McKinley and PACC all together? And then together, perfect. Come on up.
Each month we have had a school-wide focus such as Hispanic Heritage Month, Native American Heritage Month, and Black History Month. Coming up this year, we plan to highlight Asian American and Pacific Islander Month.
We have also had some great staff members who are very hardworking and help support us in school.
The teachers at McKinley are very supportive, helpful, a lot of them are funny, and are very hardworking. They help students at McKinley excel and get through the years at our school. They have good connections with their students and know what they need.
Academics are an important part of McKinley. The teachers help the students succeed so they can do their best. This year, we have had a school-wide focus on thinking maps. The teachers have also been focusing on Character Strong, which helps with expressing ourselves and our feelings.
Our 5th and 6th grade students have the opportunity to be in leadership. 6th graders who participate in leadership can run for office. Leadership works together to plan spirit days and help solve problems at our school.
Here are some of the special events that we've had throughout the year.
The primary grades celebrated the 100th day of school this year with a special assembly and class activities centered around counting to 100.
We've had multiple spirit days such as Sports Day, Pink Day, Pyjama Day, Dress Up As Your Favorite Character Day, Neon Day, and this week we have Career Spirit Day.
We celebrated Global Play Day. We played all day, we played all day with games, crafts, outside activities, and especially time to bond together throughout the day. Now, here are two PACC students to talk about what's going on in PACC.
Hi, I'm Maxine.
I'm Emma. We are both 7th grade students from PACC in a leadership class. PACC is a rigorous middle school program for dedicated 7th and 8th grade learners. The school is the same campus as McKinley Elementary School and has the same principal and staff. The students work hard and learn at an accelerated pace and do this by completing tasks, projects, simulations, tests, group tasks, and assignments. The PACC teachers are always very caring and always eager to help. Due to the small school and classes, people get more one-on-one time, which makes PACC one big family.
PACC is the number one middle school in the state of California.
We will tell you a little bit about our classes offered at PACC.
All students take math, science, English, history, PE, Spanish, and a music class.
Students can also choose an elective. We have art, leadership, food science, and digital design, which is new this year. As you can see, friendships are important at PACC. Students have time to bond and socialize with one another while learning.
We are both in leadership and help plan our school dances. The dance is a fun way to make friends and get to know each other. This year, we had a Halloween dance and we're planning on having an end-of-the-year dance as well.
The Week of Welcome was the first week of school. It was a great way to get introduced to PACC and make friends. We did team-building activities, learned about PACC, we went to the beach, had a competition between our groups. And it was Week of Welcome and it was a great way to get to know each other outside of the classroom and get to know the campus. We also got awesome shirts, which Emma is demonstrating.
This year, it was like Pac-Man themed. Mr. Komano cheated.
We are lucky to have two schools in one. Here are some of the ways that we come together as one community at McKinley and PACC.
We all raised money at the annual fundraiser that helps raise money for our school. The PTA uses the money we raised to support students and teachers. We also had, all had a good exercise that day.
Kindness Week was a great week to celebrate kindness, but it was also a great way for our whole school community to learn about kindness. PACC's leadership made posters welcomed all students to school on Welcoming Wednesday, taught lessons to classes on the value of kindness, and planned recess activities to celebrate being kind. We also planned a different spirit day for the whole week. Pyjama Day, Buddy Class Colors, Wacky Hair and Wacky Socks, Dress Up As A Hero, and Tie-Dye Day. The whole class had a lot of fun.
That sign took two weeks to paint. A lot of redos.
McKinley and PACC students come together to create an amazing show for parents and students. This year, we are performing Frozen Junior with the help of Kate Bruce-Low and teacher Katie Gill, who have organized an exciting performance. We invite you all to come see it at one of our shows this weekend.
I know I'm going on Friday. The amount of work that is put into this play is incredible. McKinley and PACC students can also participate in the play as crew. Thank you for listening.
Excellent job. Thank you so much. That was great. How many of you are in leadership in McKinley? So all of you are on, in leadership. Very good. You did a great job. I'm glad that you didn't just read from the, from the PowerPoint.
Our English teacher make sure.
Excellent teaching. Very good. Okay, so now we have an update on the Valley Vista Public Waldorf Charter School Hiring Update.
Thank you. So I just wanted to give you a quick update on all the processes with our Valley Vista Public Waldorf Charter. We're, last count, we are at about 490 students enrolling, so our enrollment is really strong. We finished our interviews for our principal position there and we're finalizing that. And we have just started working with moving over some of the Live Oak teachers to make them PCS teachers. So we're really excited about bringing in a lot of new certificated staff. Our final thing that we'll be trying to work on this spring is bringing over as much of the classified staff that they have that we're able to. Obviously, there was some tension with we already have people in classified positions and, and so we're trying to figure out how we create space for as many employees that were with, currently with Live Oak that could come over and be part of PCS for next year. So I wanted to give you an update that things are moving along and we should have more information soon on, on the principal and all of those kind of details, so.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, moving on. You know, I think if the, if the students from McKinley want to leave with their parents, they probably have lots of stuff to do. Well, congratulations, that was great. Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, the LCAP mid-year update is our next. Take it away, Tony.
Great, thank you. I wanted to give the board a kind of a quick overview of our, our dashboard, our California dashboard and, and where we are at with our LCAP for this year. So we'll start off with the dashboard. The dashboard is essentially a report card. It's a snapshot of how our district is doing and it helps us understand where, where we can improve and see which students might be struggling so that we can find ways to help continue to support them. The, the dashboard measures six state areas and five local areas. The six-state areas uses a color code process, but the, the local indicators are really a reflection that we provide. And it, it's measured based on standards met, standards not met, or standards not met for two years. The difference from the previous year or any updates for the LCAP or the dashboard this year is the College and Career Indicator is now back on with the color coding code process. You might remember last year they used the bars. Science, we won't have a performance for that because we need two years of data for that. The dashboard is now measuring long-term English learners or LTALs. And, and a part of the update for the dashboard is that our LCAP, our Local Control Accountability Plan must be downloaded onto the dashboard portal for us. So the dashboard measures based on these performance bands and based on those colors. So red is obviously areas that we would want to try to avoid. Blue is kind of like the goal, but really the green is what we're kind of shooting for. So when we look at how, how the indicators are measured, we'll, we'll look at, you know, what color code they are based on these performances. And the colors based, the identification of the color, color on each performance is based on the current year's status and then minus the change from the current year to the previous year. And they kind of do that five-by-five grid and measure up where the colors align and then that's how we, we get the colors that we see on the dashboard. So in one area that we'll measure is English and language, English Language Arts and Mathematics under the California, the CASP assessment. And it's based on the performance from the CASP and also the California Alternative Assessment for English Language Arts and Mathematics. And the students that are tested are in grades 3 through 8 and 11. And they're measured based on distance from standards, so they're essentially, you know, determining what area is the standard and then, and where the students are from that standard. So if a student scores 100 points below standard or 100 points above standard, that's how the dashboard measures on performance level for students. And so for when we look at English Language Arts, this district is at 7.2 points below standard compared to the state, which is at 13.2 points below standard. We, we decreased seven points from the previous year. So we're, this, our status is orange, but really our English learners and students with disabilities are in the red, to which we, you know, are paying close attention to with that performance.
On the Pedalum City Schools on, on everybody. If we had decreased 7.1 points from prior year, were we in yellow at that point or we were, we were state, we were still in orange?
I think we were, I'd have to look. I want to say that we might have been in yellow because we decreased a significant amount that would drop us to the next color, especially for our English learners and students with disabilities.
Okay, thank you.
In mathematics, we also decreased 3.3 points, but we are on par with the states in regards to how the state's performing and how the, our, our district is performing. And again, our English learners are in the red and also our homeless unhoused youth is in the red as well. So our English learner program, our progress indicator, ALPI, is a, essentially measures how well our students are moving, our English learners are moving towards English language proficiency. And this performance is based on the, on the ALPAC they take in grades 1 through 12. We are in, we've maintained this, this prior year. And at 46.1% making progress towards proficiency compared to the state, which is, we're essentially on par with the state. When it comes to chronic absenteeism, and this measures only K through 8, it represents a percentage of students that are chronically absent. And we are at 16.4%. We decreased by 5%, which is good, and we've maintained this yellow performance indicator. Our graduation rate essentially is a cohort of students from grades 9 through 12. And these represents the percentage of students who graduated high school within the four or five years, they allow us to use that fifth year, with a, with a standard high school diploma. We decreased about two percentage points from the previous year at 80 to 87% graduation rate as the district. Now, both high schools are over 90%, but I'm, I'm guessing, you know, because when we add in alternative ed, school, high schools as well, it may change the graduation percentage. But where we want to pay close attention to is again with our students with disabilities. You know, their graduation rate has, is continuously in the red and an area that which we want to make sure we're continually monitoring and figuring out how to, how to help those students reach a diploma or certificate completion or whatever might be appropriate for them to finish their high school year. Suspension rates, this measures TK through 12. It's a percentage of students have, have suspended for at least one full school day. And in-school and out-of-school suspensions are treated the same. So we can really celebrate here. I think Students Service has done a great job in helping guide, guide us in, in decreasing the number of suspensions that we're seeing. So this is definitely an area we can celebrate and we don't have any students in the red or in the orange. So it's great to see that we're making progress in, in this priority. So College and Career Indicator, which is a little bit more complex than how it's measured. It's measured in grade 12 and essentially there's many ways for students to be considered prepared. And so it could be how well they do on CAS, it could be how well they do not only on CAS but also on college credit courses they take. So there's various, various ways of students being considered prepared under the California or under the College and Career Indicator. We're at 48.6% and, which is another area of celebration. We've increased 4% for students who are considered college and career prepared. For districts under differentiated assistance, which we are, there are many, I guess, criterias or for us to be eligible for differentiated assistance. It could be, you know, one student group meets the criteria, at least two priority areas. So if our Latinx students, you know, were chronic absent and suspensions for the last two years, then that could put us in differentiated assistance. And there's other methods and ways to be eligible. For us, we are eligible for students with disabilities in areas 4 and 5. Areas 4 is in regards to English Language Arts and Math, and Area 5 is in regards to chronic absenteeism. And for unhoused youth, it's areas 5 and 6, and 6 is referring to suspension rates, which is very high for them. So how that kind of connects to our LCAP, because the data that we use from the dashboard and other local data that we, we, we use help us kind of pinpoint areas that we've, we know where the, the supports needed the most. And the LCAP helps us kind of narrowly and focus our dollars to try to support and, and ensure that our students can be successful and navigate our complex educational system. So our goal 1, which is our broad goal, it talks about all students who will graduate college and career-ready. This is a, a goal that we, we will probably, you know, continue on and continually improve and hopefully get to a point where every single student, you know, is prepared for whatever they want in, in their lives and have options for their lives. And, and there is that, and there are 19 goal actions in this particular goal. It's the largest goal in our LCAP. And there are many pieces in that goal that we can definitely celebrate. Our college promise with SSU, as you've seen from other previous presentations, the success of that initiative as well as, you know, our continuous professional development that we're trying to focus and provide much more meaningful PD for our staff to help kind of drive the things that we want to see happen in the classrooms and experiences that we want students to have as well as continuing to build capacity with our, our leadership and our, our staff. There are definitely around CTE, our College Career Technical Education, work-based learning coordinator that we have that helps with our students find work-based internships and work-based experiences that can help them decide what kind of careers they may want to enter into. Our climate action work that we've been doing with the Climate Action Committee and building pathways within, within that field. And of course, the passage and implementation for next year of our ethnic studies courses that, that we're able to put forward and, and have ready to go for next year. A little over 3.8 million was budgeted for this particular goal and we spent about, about a million and a half for goal 1.
I'm confused about what's budgeted and what's the actual, so does that mean that we've got more money to spend or?
So what's budgeted is what, when we build the LCAP, we, we, we build the budget in there. And as of now, this is about what we've spent of the total budget. So, yeah, as of December 31st, yeah. So yes, we should be spending it all down by the end of the year. Otherwise, we would then have to justify why we didn't. Our go-to is really around, you know, that big connected piece, belonging piece. Youth Truth is one big metrics that we use for that. We really want to increase, you know, 12% around the areas where, where students are responding to when I'm feeling upset, stressed, or having problems. There's an adult from school who I can talk to about, to, I can talk to about it. In 2022 to 2023, about 30%. And then the next year, 23, 24, we, we grew a few percentage points. And, and this last Youth Truth survey, for this particular question, we have maintained that. So there's some work we need to do around this area. And, and the schools have recently been looking at their, their own data and will begin reflecting on what they can do for the next cycle because we also do poll surveys, which also kind of is our internal measure of this particular question among other questions. So hopefully we can begin to, to figure out what we can do to, to ensure that all of our students, you know, feel that they have a trusted adult and belong and feel, you know, welcomed in their, in their school. There's a little under 2 million budgeted for this and as of December, we spent about a million and a half within this budget. Goal 3 is, is really around our, improving our English Language Arts and Mathematics for, I believe, students with disabilities. So this is, I know there's a, you know, it's a, it's been a struggle as we try to think what is doable for our students with disabilities in the, in the current environment that they're in. How do we make progress that, that we can celebrate? And so this is something that I know, you know, we're, as LCAP committee will want to reflect on a little bit. But, you know, we, we did have a special education study that really highlighted some things that we can definitely improve on. Our training for our, not only for our teachers who teach special education, but also our gen ed teachers to really understand students with IEPs and how to help support them in their classrooms. Professional development for even our classified staff who support our students with special needs. And, and, you know, being able to implement some platforms and programs to support how we monitor and how we provide additional services for students are all things that we're trying to do for this particular goal. But this, this one, there's a, it's a long road as we also look at the systems that are in place and also the structures that are in place. And do the students really have access to meaningful education that can help them improve how well they do in ELA and math? So this, this piece will, will be something that we'll also focus on with LCAP committee and really kind of dive deep into seeing what we can, what changes we need to make and how, how we can accelerate the current systems to help close the gap for our students with disabilities. There isn't a budget for this and so we haven't spent anything out of the LCAP for this. Yes. Goal 4 is really around our English learners and helping focus on reclassifying them as, as much as possible. We know based on our data that the students who have been reclassified perform on par with, with our, our whole students in regards to how well they do on the state assessments. So the goal really here is working on ways to reclassify the students as much as, and as fast as possible. We don't want our students to become long-term English learners because we know there are other struggles and challenges when they become LTALs. So really it's the focusing on how do we help reclassify our students. So more students have been reclassified. You know, there's, we, we began to implement our interpretation and translation services that some of the sites I've been using. We have a lot of students who, who speak multiple languages. And so we want to be able to, to help support our school sites to have interpretation for that. And so our language service program provider is helping provide a lot of languages other than the typical Spanish or Mandarin. But now there's French and Farsi and any basically over 200 languages that they, they can provide for a lot of our students. And, and, you know, our ELD master plan committee continues to meet and continues to reflect on ways to improve as well as professional development for ELD that we've had, just had recently. There's about $2 million budgeted for that and we've spent from that about 1.6 million. Goal 5 is particular to San Antonio because they are eligible for what is known as an equity multiplier. Essentially, it's, it's really focused around non-stability rates and socioeconomic disadvantaged students and their performance. So this goal really is focusing on how to help students who, who tend to move or don't, or tend to transition from, from their school sites and they don't stay within their school sites for the full 245 days or however long they, they need to be, as well as their performance. Everything from, from assessments to, to grad rates that we're seeing has been a challenge at San Antonio for, for a number of years. But we definitely can celebrate this year as 18 of the 45 students who are seniors there have already graduated. The site is projecting about 70% or more students graduating by the end of the year. And suspension rates are currently under 1%. So definitely a lot of progress being made there and we'll look forward to seeing the, the work that they'll continue to do the rest of this year and give you an update on how well that turns out. Because they, that budget isn't a part of the LCAP, there's nothing we put in here for that, but they do, Equity Multiplier does provide funds and that shifts every year depending on the, on how the, the students shift as well. But for this particular goal, it is an impact to, to the LCAP budget, so there are no actual expenditures coming from there. Because we, you might have remembered last year, we, we implemented a new LCAP, three-year cycle. So this is the first year of that implementation cycle. So the, really the goal is to continue to monitor the progress, to ensure we're, what we say we're doing in the LCAP is what's happening. And if it's working, how do we continue to support it? And if it's not working, do we need to change any of those actions? And so really it's looking at the actions and making sure that they're actually happening and if they are effective or not. And if they're not, then the committee can then make recommendations around changing some of those actions. Goals are a little bit harder to, to change because we want to give it time to, to, to work out. But in some situations, goals can be changed, but it just goes through a longer and deeper process that we'll have to explore if that ever comes up with LCAP committee. So with that, any questions?
Joanna?
Yeah, I had a question slash comment about goal 3. And I've said this before and at the committee, I just feel like 30 points is too low. And so I know it's like a process to change the goal. But I guess what is the process for us exploring? But I guess what is the process for us exploring changing that even or if we even want to? I know we have the special ed study, but we haven't really gone in depth in into it. But I just wonder if like we're setting that bar too low for our students with disabilities, because it's still just putting them at like negative ninety. So that was my question slash comment. And then what other metrics can we use if like the CAFS maybe isn't like a good indication of how they're progressing? I know that like common assessments are still not being done in terms of math. But I also just don't know like what other ways we can measure the progress of our students with disabilities. Okay, so the first one really was a comment, I guess, but you can respond, because I know we've talked about this before. And then the second part about the metrics, are there any other metrics that we could potentially look at? Maybe like not have it be in the LCAP if that doesn't work out, since I know it's a three-year cycle. But just like as a board, just to look at the progress of our students with disabilities and our English learners as well.
Yeah, I think I think we I think it's worth exploring. You know, if we want to change that goal with LCAP committee and bringing it up as as a possible as a possibility. I think, you know, the process is obviously a little bit may may entail a little bit longer process, and we may have to add another meeting. But I don't think it's not impossible, and it's worthwhile to to explore, because those are our students who are furthest from justice and our students who are furthest from opportunity. And I think we owe it to really take another deeper dive look. I think when we we think about how do we measure their, you know, whether or not there's other ways we can help measure their how students are successful. Yeah, I mean, we definitely want we we, I mean, CAS, you know, it's a one summative measurement, but it's usually at the end of the year, it's at the end of the year, and we and the data is sometimes too late. But that's just one indicator. So we we look at other indicators, too. We look at, you know, do they have a sense of belonging? Do they feel connected to school? What is their experience like in school? What is their graduate looks like? Their absenteeism and the suspension rates are also part of the pieces that we want to look at, because we also noticed there in differentiated assistance for not only how well they're doing in school, but also the absenteeism piece, which then if they're not coming to school, then that could be a reason why they may not be doing as well. So in one sense, yes, you know, we can look at other formative local assessments that that can give us a snapshot of how well they're doing at that given moment in time in regards to their academics. But then the other pieces, how do we? What what actions or systems or pieces we can put in place that that can support them being successful? But, you know, whether if it's if they're not being if they're not coming to school or do is the structure of their of the of how students are scheduled in the classroom is does that impact their learning? If they're self-contained and they don't have access to their peers and be able to be a part of the school system, does that impact how well they they perform? What is their, you know, access to courses look like? As we know, that's been a challenge for a lot of our English learners and also for students with disabilities. And a big key factor why we're moving to a seven-period days, so that those students can have access to courses that they typically would not have had access to in the past is all factors to help us to see if those any of those things can help them achieve on on how well they do in school, but also making sure they a factor that helps them come to school as well. So I think if we're looking at goal three to help maybe shift or change that goal, those are things that we can then build in metrics is to help support that.
Anyone else?
Vivian? Are the translators being hired like based on need or how does that work?
So every school site's given access to interpretation and translation. We haven't put any limits on that, because we want to see how often it's being used, and then we can adjust, you know, in what level of what level of access we would need to give, because it's not because it's not unlimited funds for for interpretation, translation. So essentially, the sites, if they need it, they 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 call a number and they they request what type of translation they need. And then that platform finds the interpreter, and all the interpreters are native speakers and certified by the state. So they so they're highly qualified to interpret everything from IEPs to, you know, complex conversations or to simple parent conference if they need it. But there hasn't every site has essentially unlimited access for now until the money runs out, and then we can kind of see. But so far, I've had we had good feedback from the principals, the ones that have accessed it and and felt it's been a life-saving for them, especially we have a lot of students from from Haiti and from Ukraine that really need some of those interpretations that they have haven't had before.
Do we make it available to our students with disabilities to get a high school diploma rather than a certificate of completion? Because I'm thinking that if if that's not a path, that might be one reason why they're not coming to school or they don't have that pathway to get the actual diploma.
Yes, so the California passed a California alternative diploma pathway, which is essentially students who qualify for the California Alternative Assessment could then be obtain a state diploma. It wouldn't be our, you know, general ed diploma that we have. But that has a condition, students have to qualify for that under CAA, and there's a process for that. Where I'm working with the special services to actually develop a local diploma for students who have IEPs that may not qual that may not qualify for the California Alternative Diploma, but could potentially qualify for a local diploma, essentially elevating the certificate of completion, which essentially doesn't mean anything and doesn't open any doors for them. So we're looking to see if, one, we can potentially replace the the certificate completion with a local diploma or, you know, have it in addition to for the students who, you know, could achieve it through meeting whatever criteria that might look like for us. So the goal is really working out this spring and then and hopefully bringing something to the board to consider for our students with disabilities who could despite all their best efforts, may not necessarily have the the really opportunity to receive a full diploma like our other students, but could receive a local diploma, much like the California Alternative Diploma.
No more questions? Thank you, Tony. That was great. Let's hope for good things. Okay, North Bay Security presentation, we have Esmeralda.
So thank you for having us here tonight to talk about our partnership with North Bay Security. Want to give you some history of our partnership and some of the current work that we're doing right now in our district. So as you all know, that the the safety landscape in schools has has changed drastically over the over the past decades. And in the spring of twenty twenty-two, we had we began a comprehensive view of our safety plans. If you recall, twenty-one, twenty-two, coming back from the pandemic, we were sort of re-establishing our protocols and our safety plans. And so the former Assistant Superintendent of PCS began this work with a safety committee that was comprised of community partners, first responders, staff and families. And these were the goals that were created at that time. One was to create actionable safety plans for our school sites, to create a website of resources for schools in the community and really hone in on training. So training to our staff across the district so that they would feel competent and prepared to respond to any kind of crisis scenarios. And then to also build those networks of support. And I'm happy to say that we have such a wonderful collaborative relationship with our partners, the city of Petaluma, Petaluma Police Department and the Sonoma County Sheriff as this work began. In the spring of twenty twenty-two, doing some research in in the area, we landed on forming a partnership with North Bay Security that was founded by Bill Welch, and they have been with us since then and really sort of developed this partnership in really great ways. So I'll let Bill talk a little bit about his organization.
Good evening. So this is Jim and Matt. If you guys can stand up, these are the people that are working at the sites every day in Petaluma. So just a real quick background, we're all former law enforcement. Between the three of us, you're looking at eighty-plus years of law enforcement experience. The bigger picture is you're looking at probably about thirty years of working with school districts with the experience that we have between the three of us. So I started I retired in Novato in twenty ten and started North Bay Security Group. Jan Derby, the Superintendent of Novato, was concerned about what they were going to do when they were getting rid of the school resource officers. So I started working closely with the schools. Because when I was in Novato, I did all the specialties that you could think of as a police officer. So I knew a lot of the dynamics of how schools were different, and the brain is a lot different than how first responders respond. And my father was also a principal, so I kind of understood the school concept. So when I was asked to come up here, we talked about what I had done in Novato. And a lot of it had to do with training staff post-Columbiana ninety-nine. The reason a lot of the the horrific things were slowing down and the responses were increasing was because police officers were being trained. But in twenty thirteen, they said, well, why aren't we training staff? So now staff is being taught how to respond to these crises, as students are being taught how to respond to the crisis. So the the incidents are, instead of an hour long, they're five to ten minutes or shorter, they're not happening as often. So that was a a big thing that we wanted to teach the staff. The other thing that we look at is how do we engage the students? How do we keep students engaged in school? How do we get them back to school if they're not going to school? So we work a lot with the truancy issues. We do a lot of mentoring K through twelve, even the little ones need it. And we just really focus on what we can do to support the staff and families and the students to be successful at school. So you can look at the different things that we do, intruder response, safety drills, safety evaluations, and a bunch of training, not only with staff, but also with students at the both high schools. We did presentations of what a lockdown or a secure the campus looks like and what their the kids' responsibilities are. We don't want to surprise them, they need to be aware and know how to respond. So that's just a quick overview of what we do.
So when we started this work in spring of twenty twenty-two, we began looking at our safety plans and doing walkthroughs with Bill in particular to give us insight into areas of improvement at our sites. Conference, not only just the specific drills, but really the incident command center. So really, training our principals, in particular our leaders, on how to develop those incident command systems, doing the comprehensive drills. We're really lucky in our district, we do these drills on an annual basis, the big drill. And so everyone is practicing these, being on these teams. North Bay is observing and providing feedback and and giving us areas of improvement as well. In addition, we have involved and include North Bay in our after-action reviews on any major incident. So if you recall, we had some major incidents last spring in PCS, last year as well as this fall. And so North Bay was really instrumental in working with our law enforcement partners and sort of connecting all of those dots to the ways that we're training our staff and the follow-up that and and discussions that we're having with law enforcement partners. PPD works collaboratively with all of the folks on North Bay, the North Bay team. And so it's just been this very seamless relationship across the board. North Bay also comes to our district safety committee, they've been on panels, just really speaking and lending that support. And then the added piece is that additional security and presence at our school sites after any major incident. So we've had situations where maybe we've had like an online threat, right? And then there's the aftermath of the next day at school. And so while we don't necessarily want like a a law enforcement officer on our campus, we need more eyes and ears, right? And so North Bay has been instrumental in helping us in that area as well. We entered into a two-year contract in May twenty twenty-four, because we wanted to continue that existing partnership. So we have that for twenty-four, twenty-five, this current school year, and then twenty-five, twenty-six. As I shared, we had some major safety incidents. And in that process, particularly with Pengrove this fall, it was evident, you know, North Bay arrived on the scene and actually changed the tactical response in the moment, working with our partners, boots on the ground, and it drastically shifted the flow of what needed to happen at our evacuation site. And so that sort of expertise that they lend and they come in the moment and help us with in some of the hardest of times has been just so such a relief, I think, for our administrators and staff and as well for us as a district. That led us to this pilot program that we're starting for this semester. So we have one security consultant from North Bay in district from Monday through Friday. And so we entered into an agreement for the pilot program for this spring from starting in that second semester. So when we came back from winter break and Dean on the last day of school. And what this is providing is daily support, checking in. A lot of the time is spent at the secondary school sites, checking in with administration, walking the campuses. Elementary sites are visited at least once a week and always available to respond. I mean, I called Matt today, like, I need you over here, can you go over there? We have this situation. So they're just nimble and they 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 turn on a dime and head where they need to go to assist us. They assisted investigations and reports of suspicious activity. As Bill shared, they have hundreds of hours of de-escalation techniques, hands-on experiences, restorative practices, alternatives to suspension. Again, that seamless relationship with our law enforcement partners can also conduct home visits for chronic absences, just make checking in on students. We'd love to see you back at school from a supportive perspective and verifications of residency when requested. So they are doing a ton and providing a lot of supports to help keep our our site safe. North Bay provides a log of activities on a weekly basis and on a monthly basis. And so this are just some of the impact in January and February around the types of activities from campus checks, safety drills, advice for staff, investigations of possible substance abuse. So you see there the different examples. I will also say like meetings, we've had situations where our administrators have needed additional security and support when they have been navigating some precarious issues. So not only do they support our students, they're supporting our staff in the moment and kind of waiting in the wings, making sure we've had them be at community meetings where we've had some concerns about potential disruption. So they really are providing just a plethora of support to to everyone. I do want to highlight some staff perspectives. So I have Erica Noon here tonight from Casa Grande, and I have Whitney Catrell, principal from KJ on Zoom. So we'll start with Erica and talk a little, she'll talk a little bit about some of it.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I don't have a lot of Esmeralda's report was was pretty extensive. But the big piece that I wanted to highlight that we've worked really closely on is our safety response plans. And Bill has been working with me since last year on building out our comprehensive response in the case of any and all emergencies that may and have come up. But it's also in, once we make the plan, then what? When we go to practice, they're at every one of our drills taking notes so that they can give us feedback. So when I'm in the middle of it, I don't have to pay attention to what's working and what's not, because they're behind me taking notes and saying, oh, for next time, this is what we need to do next time. Did you remember to check Sonoma Mountain? Because I can't think of all the things all the time unless we have that feedback. So that's been a huge help in just making sure that when we have drills, but also when we have the real emergencies that we're really prepared. And that's a piece of expertise that I don't already have and isn't doesn't exist inside of our current staff. There isn't somebody else who knows how to do that better than these guys. The other piece that I also wanted to highlight was the extra supervision support at football games. Football games can get a little hairy. Friday night lights mean a lot to a lot of people. And we contract out with PPD, and they send two officers to every Friday night varsity game. But then the officers, the officers just stand at the gate and watch the game. They aren't proactive with students, they aren't meandering around, they aren't talking to kids and telling them to get off the equipment, because it's not safe and helping kids. You know, maybe you shouldn't climb on that container, on that giant storage container, because, you know, getting down, you might hurt yourself. I think somebody, one of you guys helped me find that kid's shoe that time in the. Yeah, so there's lots of that piece of support and the proactiveness and that that not being afraid to talk to everybody and anybody that's there, because that's how you prevent bad things from happening is anonymity, when people don't think that you know who they are. When people don't think that you know who they are, that's when they make the choices because they think they're going to get away with it. And they helped me not let that happen. In a way that PPD just didn't, doesn't, that's not their protocols, right? That's not their, they wait for something bad to happen and then respond, whereas these guys have really helped a lot with stopping the bad things from happening to begin with. And, yeah, in just a more meaningful and skilled way than just having somebody stand and watch a gate.
Yeah, there's some of that.
Do we do that too?
Sometimes.
Yeah, my, they've helped with, when we suspect somebody's under the influence, having a second person there who has more experience, they have a lot more training than we do about recognizing the indicators that some, I mean, we have breathalyzers, but that only helps with alcohol, right? So, and there's a lot of other things that kids are into these days. And their skills and experience really help us to identify who's safe to be on our campus and who might not be. But really just having the extra set of, of that administrative lens also, because we've been a little short-staffed in the CASA administration. This year's been a little bumpy there and they've really been really instrumental, helpful and instrumental in making sure that our campuses are safe. So.
If we could elevate Whitney Catrell from Zoom.
Good evening, can you hear me? Okay, good. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight about the partnership with North Bay. Their expertise, dedication, and presence on our campus has been instrumental in enhancing safety supervision and student support in ways that I am excited to share with everyone tonight. North Bay, not only have they been instrumental in providing the comprehensive safety training that Esmeralda mentioned for our staff, and being there during and actively participating in our drills, that offers real-time constructive feedback that has helped us refine our procedures. And their ongoing support has significantly strengthened our overall safety readiness at Kennelworth. In my ten years as administrator, I have not experienced this level of support and commitment to safety preparedness before. Additionally, North Bay has been a valuable presence on our campus. They offer additional supervision and support when available. They're not on our campus daily, but when they are, they strengthen our ability to maintain a safe and structured environment, especially during the heavily traffic times of break and lunch. Matt and Jim have become trusted adults among students on our campus. They proactively build positive relationships with our students and help us reinforce expectations for of behavior. Matt and Jim have also played a vital role in student reentry meetings, offering valuable insight and mentorship for our students who have faced disciplinary consequences and are re-entering the school or classroom environment. They are there with us during those meetings, and their ability to provide key observations and guidance to our students has helped to strengthen our support systems, and it's led to more meaningful interventions, it's led to fostering accountability with our students, and helping our students make positive choices moving forward. They're also continuing to mentor our students and those that they're making connections with. North Bay's support also extends beyond our campus and into our surrounding community. Given our proximity at Kennelworth to a local shopping center, we face challenges with student behavior after school in nearby businesses. Matt and Jim have been proactive in going to the shopping center and observing student behavior in the businesses, serving as liaison with the business supervisors and managers and helping problem-solve behavioral concerns from our students. They have truly been the eyes and ears of our community, and they've enabled our administrative team to follow up and provide appropriate support to students. Given the obligations that our administrative and counseling team manages daily, we simply do not have the capacity to provide this level of after-school supervision without the support of North Bay. They have been instrumental in really changing the behavior of our students after school in the community, and we are truly grateful for their expertise, their time, and their commitment to helping the Kennelworth staff and students make a positive difference in, at our school. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, Whitney and Erica and the North Bay team. If there's any questions from the board members?
Do they have any questions?
I was gonna ask about Safeway, though. Yeah, I mean, I hate that it's the schools or y'all's responsibility, but I think it's a really good sign and it shows that we do listen and care. I mean, I know a gentleman came in like six months or a year ago, and that was more at the other Safeway closer to CASA, like, what are the schools doing? And part of me is like, that's not our job, but also they are our kids and they are in the community. So I think that's great, y'all are out there. It makes, everything I've heard tonight makes me want to clone more of y'all and maybe not use PP, not pay PPD to watch our games.
Do we pay PPD to stand at the gate and watch the game?
There is a fee for, for law enforcement.
Do we need them?
We, it's just been what we have done in terms of the football games, but we, CASA in particular wanted additional, and so they, they, and actually for the Egg Bowl, we did contract with you, yes. So we have, we have done more with, we've added on with North Bay at some, at some key games in particular. Yeah.
And there was no issues with the egg, other than a health issue. And the good news is we're also first aid CPR instructor, so we can help with that. Just a little bit of everything.
I have some questions, because it came up in a previous meeting about the home visits for students who are chronically absent and the residency verifications. But I know like past practice or current practices to have like, school employees do those visits and to verify residency. And so, I mean, I don't know how I would feel if someone came to my home, because my child was chronically absent that I was not familiar with as a school employee, so love to hear more about that.
Yeah. And the, so in the past, we've also contacted PPD to do well checks for chronically absent students, students that aren't coming at all, because we also need to make sure that they're okay. And so, students that are, the well checks or the checks that have happened have been for sort of those extreme cases as well. But I can let Bill kind of speak to the, the interactions and that approach. Yeah.
So the unique thing about being a police officer, twenty-five years now, doing this for almost fifteen, you were, you look at a different lens. When, I used to go to do home visits for chronically absent kids or truant kids, and I showed up in uniform, there was no communication. They didn't want to talk, it's not your problem, it's not a police problem, it's illegal not to come to school. But what I've seen, especially the last ten to fourteen years after getting out of law enforcement, people want to talk to us because we're not there to give them a ticket or to cite mom or dad for not having your student go to school. It's like, how can we help you? Do you need a ride? You need transportation? Is there something happening at school that is preventing you from going to school? Are you being bullied? Is there something unsafe? I mean, what is the reason? One of the schools we went to, because there was a relationship involved in two students that just wanted to go off and get married and not finish school. So it's really just, we have the time, we have the time to sit and talk for an hour, where police officers have five or ten minutes, their radio goes off and they have to leave. So this is, they don't, they're not intimidated by us showing up. We show up like this, or a shirt that has our name and our company. So it's just really low-key and it's how can we help you, as opposed to if you don't show up, I'm giving you a ticket and you got to go to court. So it's, it's really much more positive what we're doing. The verifications are very few and far between. As you know, as a district, if you have students coming into your district that aren't living in your district and they don't go through the inter-district or inter-district transfers, it costs you money for that student. And when kids are not doing what they're supposed to be doing, or they're causing some issues on the campus, and you find out they're not living here, is that, you want to use all your resources for those students that actually are taking maybe a chair from this student at a school because they're not living in this community? We've only done one of those, and we did verify that they were actually in the runner park. That, those are so few and far between, but occasionally we will do that. And again, it's less intimidating for the family, and sometimes we don't even contact the family, we just sit out in front and see when they leave. So we're not confrontational at all.
Okay, well, I answered it, doesn't make me feel any better, but thank you for, it does, it doesn't, it doesn't actually make me feel better about it. Yeah, I just, I don't know, because usually it's like a school employee, and that is like best practices, I believe. And we do also contract with KKIS, right? With chronically absent or truant.
Yes, we have a, we have, they can do about twelve kids on the caseload, so usually it through the SARB process, that's where we're kind of working KKIS. But also the, the chronically absent, we can take whatever approach we want to as well. So if that, if that, we need to alter that, or we need to take, you know, have two people go, what, you know, like, we can, we can flexibly work that end of things.
And we also will take administrator with us or a counselor with us, or a community liaison with us.
That actually does make me feel better.
Absolutely.
It is supporting, it is totally supporting the family, it's not being the bad person going over there and making them feel bad and threatening them.
Absolutely, yeah.
Right. Yeah. And then just something I ask of everyone who comes before us with anything is like the cultural responsive approach, because, I mean, you guys are all, I believe, three white men, and like forty percent-ish of our district is students of color. And so, just like, what type of training do you have? Like, how does that come into play when you're interacting with different people from different backgrounds? Yeah, I think that's the extent of my question.
So we, Jim grew up in Ohio, but was in the military and been in the Bay Area since nineteen eighty-eight, seven, something like that. Matt grew up in Kentucky, came out here, he was a Petaluma police officer, he has a family that went through schools here, Jim's kids went through here. I grew up in Novato. I did have a African-American person working for me, unfortunately, he passed away in November. So that is something that I think is important. It's hard finding these specialized people that are really good, but that's something that I actively am looking for because of the family dynamics or the cultural differences that people feel more comfortable with somebody similar to them. But our training is, we have a lot of diversity training, equity training. We, we don't look at the skin of the color of the people, we look at who they are and what their issues are. We don't, I can speak for myself and everybody in my team, if somebody was that way, they wouldn't be working for me. It is very important to acknowledge diversity and to work with anybody, no matter who they are, what they look like. And that is our philosophy, and I would not tolerate anybody working for me that looked at it a different way.
I hear that, I just know like, that could be our attent, our intentions, but sometimes our unconscious biases come into play, so.
Sure.
I was just wondering what type of ongoing training is happening.
Yeah, people look at me like, well, you're white and you're, you know, so you have all these things. Well, I can't help, well, I am, but this is what I can do for you.
Yeah, I don't think it's about being white, I think it's about being culturally responsive and aware of the families that you're, you're working with, especially in our district, as we're seeing the population of not just our district, but of our city and our country, hopefully, getting more diverse.
I appreciate that.
Ava?
Um, as a student, I just want to like, like, it makes me feel much better knowing about you guys' presence, I feel like, especially considering how often there are like things on the news about like students harming other students, like locally too, like in our area. And as someone who's like very active in my like school community, it's something I worry about a lot. Luckily, my experience at CASA has felt really good and really safe, and I, I just like, it's very good to know that like you guys are there. And I wish that everyone knew about that, because it's not something I feel like students are really aware of. And so I, I do know that there are students and families that like worry about their safety coming onto campus, so it's a public high school in Petaluma. So I don't know if there's anything to do about like publicizing your presence more, but I think that would make a lot of people feel much safer, just knowing that already.
Thank you.
I also wanted to add, we had a big drill with you guys at Petaluma High School a little while ago, and I didn't even know that we were like necessarily was like you partnering with you guys, but I can tell as a student that it was elevated so much more from our regular drills. You could tell all the staff, all the teachers knew what they were doing, everyone knew where they were going. It was like, just so elevated that they had, we had students like hiding in areas for teachers to go find them, like hiding in little corners. And as a student who like, that could be me in that corner. And it's knowing a teacher will find you is like so reassuring in any event, and yeah, it was, it was great. I really appreciated it.
When we do our equity trainings and professional development for staff, can we make that available for North Bay and?
Absolutely.
Pay them to be there, like the rest of our staff is getting paid to be there?
Absolutely. And the feedback loop with Bill is super open, like any, anything comes up, like we're, we're talking constantly, and Bill has been just super flexible and nimble on any, anything that comes up. But, and in relation to that, we absolutely can as well. Anybody else?
Yeah, so to go back to the truancy visits, how are we measuring outcomes when there's a successful conversation and tracking whether that intervention worked? Or, again, it just reverts back to normal, normal rates and normal, you know, absences?
So the principals who have, who have asked for a visit are providing feedback saying the student is now coming. We haven't, I'd have to go back and look at the logs and then look at the attendance rate after the visit to see, you know, but we haven't done a whole ton of those either. But, but I can go back and check for those particular students, what is their, I have anecdotally from the principals who have requested the visit that like, they're coming.
That's something I would like to drill, drill down on.
Yeah.
As we have successful interventions, because I know sometimes you will visit and there will be a conversation.
Yeah.
But when there is a conversation, that we can log that, and then we can track to see, again, whether that was a successful intervention compared to a, you know, the non-intervention, and we can track the rates to see, again, what is the best, you know, method of, you know, communicating with parents and students, whether it is just staff or with a, you know, with one of our consultants.
But what's nice is we send a weekly log to her saying students' names, so there's dropdown boxes like campus check, or ex-patrol, or home visit, or, you know, there's a list of about fifteen different things that we do. The slideshow maybe seven. So it'll show the name, and that we did a home visit, and then it's just a matter of reaching out and going into areas and checking out students and seeing what their attendance is. So it's not a hard thing to do. The couple that I told you about are back at school, going to school, so that's a positive thing. But it is very easy to track, because we give her a log, huh?
That's great, so then I do want to track.
Yeah.
It's easy to do, and I do want us to, to have objective data, to again, and then, so we can evaluate this moving forward.
Along those lines, it just occurred to me, who makes the referrals? And, you know, for a home visit, at what point?
Principals.
Principals, so it's, it's your responsibility? So what, what? And counselors? Okay. And it, and how does it, how does it feed into the SARB? And those, I think it's SARB?
I can.
I get confused with some of the acronyms.
There's SARS and then there's SARS. So SARB is Student Tenure Review Team, and if that doesn't work, then it goes to SARB, which is a district level.
And then when does it come to a, a home visit? Does that go, come before all of that?
SARB usually.
Okay.
To find out why the student, I mean, you're chronic after eighteen days, so ten percent is legally chronic or truant.
Okay. So then you could theoretically look at a home visit and then see if those students then go into a SARB or a SARB. Okay. Thank you. That's really interesting. Thank you.
Let me add one more thing, sorry, I know I made a time, but in Novato, because I've been there for fourteen-plus years, you can see the attendance rates actually increase because we're doing a lot of home visits. And one of the big pushes I said is, if you want kids engaged, there's no reason a kid should, all of a sudden you look at the, the kid's name and they've been gone out of school for two months. the kid's name and they've been gone out of school for two months. Like, why wasn't there an intervention when they missed three days in a row? So I really put it on the administration and the office folks that you want to, you know, if you're ADA, you get money for kids in seats, right? Why aren't you taking a proactive approach to getting these kids, finding out why they're not coming? So if there's a kid missing three days, you really should be, if you can't, people don't answer email or phone calls, then what is your next step? Sending somebody to find out, did they move? Why aren't they coming to school? And it's, it's vital because kids that miss 20 days of school are not going to succeed. So I really emphasize to the administration that three days is, three days too many that nobody's following up with why kids aren't coming to school.
Thank you. Okay.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Did you want to say something too?
Just to.
I think I met you at Grant.
I'm sorry.
I think I met you at Grant.
You did.
Oh, yeah, come on up to the.
Just for reference, we're about who you are. When we go to do home visits, we have contractor IDs with school, at PCS. And I identify myself as I'm working with the schools. We don't just show up and say, I'm from North Bay, weren't you at school? Just, so there's more of an interaction with them so that they know who we are, why we're there and that the school did send us. So.
That piece is important because if, if us, like I have a junior at CASA. So then if like you came to my home, I'd be like, I've not seen you in three years. You know, so I think that's because like the relationship had not previously been built. And so that's why I was wondering about why North Bay is doing the home visits instead of like someone that the person or the family is already familiar with. So, um, yeah, thank you.
Sometimes at the grade school level, the administrators can't leave.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why they, and then interns send us. And if one wants to go with me, I'm more than happy to have them go with me because it makes life easier.
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Ava?
Um, for students, when you, and the occasion that you do go and do a home visit and you find that they're struggling at school or like emotionally or mentally, what are like the steps taken to offer them support after that? What are like, I don't know if that's in your realm of work or if that just then gets passed on to the school. Like what are we doing so they are able to like healthily submerge back into the environment?
So that's a great question. And there's resources at the school and we'd say, well, is there any resources you're getting now? Have you talked to anybody? Is there a trusted, you know, one of the, the goals they have, is there a trusted adult at school that you can talk to about this? Usually hopefully it would be a counselor or an administrator. But finding the history and that's why it's nice to be able to spend that time with you because we don't have to leave in five minutes. We can be there for an hour or two hours if we need to, to find out really what's going on. And then reaching back out to the school saying the student's not going because of A, B, and C. And what can we do to get engaged this student? And then maybe as simple as, well, my mom leaves for work at five in the morning. I'm nearby myself. I gotta get my two brothers ready for school. And I don't get to school till 10 o'clock and sometimes I'm too tired. And then trying to work with the family advocates to make that successful. So you're not being a parent anymore because your parent had to go to work. So just taking that time to understand what's going on with your family. And it's not judgmental. It's, it's family struggle. Being in Marin and Stone is very expensive.
So then maybe you can answer this then Miss Noon. Um, I don't know if you've had to deal with any of that personally. Okay, so when they do like inform you, this is what's going on. This is the reason they're not coming to school. Are we seeing any like consistent support for the student?
Sure. So I'm going to just use one, one of the examples um, was, I'm not going to name names. Uh, we had a student who um, we had tried and tried and tried to contact mom. Um, and we discovered through the home visit that the phone number and home address that the, that was in Aries were one digit off. Because the student had pretended to be the parent and had gone in and changed it so that the school could not contact his mother. So we had to do some investigating and discovered that it was across the street where he actually lived. Um, made contact with mom, got the correct information. Um, that student was also overdue for an IEP because mom was not getting any of the notices because the mail was going to the wrong house. And so finally, um, we got him in, we got meetings with mom, um, attendance improved. We put together some behavioral support plans. Um, and then the part that I really just also want to mention is that after those home visits, every time they come back to site just for their check-in, oh, how's so-and-so doing? How's so-and-so doing? They're also not just depending on us to submit all of the supports after the fact, but they're following up on those specific kids by name and saying, what's going on with so-and-so? Are they here? Can I talk with them today? And just trying to build those relationships even after the fact. So um, honestly, part of it is that we're very busy at the site and it's hard to get offsite to go um, knock on someone's door. And I've done them. Um, and sometimes we're going into situations where there's a history of DV, of domestic violence. That one of the parents that might live at the house has a criminal record. I, as showing up at someone's front door and a six foot tall man shows up in front of me, I'm not going to feel safe to do that by myself. But if I have Bill next to me, it's a little different. So it's partially um, a time save for us because I don't have to go driving all over town trying to find these people when they give us the wrong address. But also on the occasion where there's a potential for harm, um, I feel a lot more safe having one of these guys with me. But they do help with the follow-up and they do leave it for us because that is where it's appropriate. But um, I don't always um, know what the problem is if, if I don't get the information that they provide.
Wonderful. Thank you both.
Okay. All right. Thank you. This is great. Anything? Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent. Who knew? There's always something. Can we get through second? Uh, we're going to take a we're going to take a five-minute quick break. We're going to uh, we are now going to have our second interim presentation.
Lovely. Thank you. I will give Dave, uh, there we go. There it is. All right, tonight we bring forward our second interim to the 2425 school year budget. At Petaluma City Schools, we are committed to providing a diverse, equitable and inclusive education that empowers students to explore, collaborate and grow as responsible community members. We believe every student has infinite potential. Learning thrives in a safe and sort of supportive environment and strong partnerships with families and the community enrich our schools. Through academic excellence, diversity and collaboration, we ensure all students have the opportunity to succeed. The second interim report is a required component of the financial reporting in compliance with Education Code 42130, which mandates that districts submit two financial interim reports to the County Office of Education each fiscal year. This report reflects actual financial data through January 31st, 2025, along with revised projections for the remainder of the fiscal year. We are pleased to report a positive certification confirming the district's ability to meet its financial obligations for the current and next two fiscal years. The financial reporting cycle ensures transparency and accountability in our budget process. It begins with the adoption of the LCAP and budget in June of 2024, followed by the first interim report in December. And that now we're at the second interim in March, which provides an updated financial data and projections. Additionally, the governor's budget proposals in January and May guide future funding expectations. The cycle concludes with the annual audit report and budget adoption, ensuring fiscal responsibility and alignment with district goals. So it's basically one big circle every three months. All right, um, tonight I would like to present um, the changes in revenue from first to second interim. Second interim is highlighted yellow along with um, the variances at the end. The general fund revenue increased by $840,000 from first interim. Key gains include $460,000 from LCFF sources, about $180,000 in federal revenue and 650 in local revenue, reflecting um, stable funding and community support. Our state revenues decreased by $455,000, reflecting routine adjustments to funding allocations. Usually I blow through, but are there any questions on our revenues? All right. All right, here is our expenditures, the same as our revenue table. We'll take a close look at the highlighted yellow, which is our second interim. The total general fund expenditures decreased by $439,000. Um, this is the one area that it's good to have a decrease. Um, it means our expenditures for the year are down a little bit. This is driven by slight reductions in certificated and classified salaries due to adjustments. Services and other operating costs saw a modest increase of just under $50,000, while capital outlay and indirect costs remain stable. The district continues to prioritize fu- fiscal responsibility, ensuring efficient spending while maintaining strong student programs. Were there any questions on our expenditures?
So are we at like $11 million deficit spending?
Yes, we will. Yes, we are.
Okay.
I was, that's also the next slide. But yes, we um, uh, throughout this year, um, from the budget adoption through first interim, we were closer to 12 million. We've now decreased um, by additional $430,000. I would like to point out that um, this does not include anticipated salary increases um, that we will likely retro back to July 1. And um, we've been talking a lot about with our budget, our reductions of staffing in next fiscal year. I do want to point out, probably touch on it again, but this is a, a planned deficit. We received a whole bunch of one-time dollars about four or five years ago and those all hit our general fund as revenue in the year that we received the allocation. So your only option is if you didn't spend all of that money in the first year um, of the allocation is to deficit spend the years out to spend down the restricted reserves. Um, this is a quick picture of our restricted and ending balances. So when we talk about our reserves, I'm always going to be referring to our unrestricted reserves. That is where the state requirement lies to be above the 3%. So at the end of this fiscal year, we anticipate having $12.2 million of restricted reserves in our general fund, which we will continue throughout this year and our year-end closing to spend down, um, continuing the trend of spending our most restricted dollars first. And here is our multi-year projections. Um, the yellow is our current year and we always project out two fiscal years. The multi-year projections show a gradual reduction in the fund balance with deficit spending of $11.5 million in this year, $4.7 million in fiscal year 26, and just under $1 million in fiscal year 27. This includes a planned spend, excuse me, planned spend down of restricted fund balances in fiscal year 25 and 26 to support designated programs. As a result, the unrestricted fund balance is projected to decline from $6.5 million in fiscal year 25, $3.2 million in fiscal year 27, highlighting key areas to monitor for long-term sustainability. So as we continue to um, update our financials uh, um, with our implementation of next year's budget, um, we will see an update to our multi-year projections when we bring back our AB 1200 when we settle salary negotiations um, with our labor partners. We will continue to monitor these as the board makes decisions based off of um, financial decisions based off of priorities. We will need to adjust our spending. Um, one of the things that we've been talking a lot about is with this expiration of COVID funding, the one good thing with it going away is I will no longer talk about it. It's like all I talk about is that we're, we're really getting back to pre-pandemic times. Um, there's a lot of conversations in the state, um, spending today's dollars on today's students. If you opt to do that and you also are opting to maintain a certain reserve, be it the state minimum of 3% or board resolution of 10%, um, you're always close to that cliff because every decision you're making is impacted by the, the reserves that you have. And if we're trying to adequately spend our dollars, every decision that we make to spend more dollars means we're going to get to a place um, where we have to cut somewhere else. This is um, school budgeting and what it's been for years. So though I've been talking a lot about the spending down and the deficit spending and needing to make the cuts, this is all um, normal spending. This isn't a structural deficit at this point because we have the restricted reserves. So it's something to be mindful of um, as we continue forward. But we're not in a place of scarcity um, with our funds. So this is the overall projections that show um, our unrestricted and our restricted um, ending balances at the end of fiscal year 27. This is a quick snapshot of our special funds, our beginning fund balance as of July 1 and where we anticipate ending this fiscal year. Um, one of the things we have is in our Fund 13, we are having a planned spend down. Um, with your food service reserves, you can only have six months of operating costs. Um, that's allowable by the state. So we were really close at the end of last year. So if you see a lot of big, great things going on in food service, um, that's why. Which this was a great year for the implementation of our new um, meals at onsite. Um, the other thing that I want to note is our building fund 20, Fund 21 that encompasses both our current um, elementary and secondary bonds. Though we have an ending balance of $7.6 million, we have earmarked those funds. Those are all of the great projects we have going on. And the expectation is that those funds are completely spent at the end of next fiscal year um, as our projects that are currently going on end. Um, and other than that, we do, you can see that we do have a balance in Fund 25, which is our developer fees. Um, by resolution, the goal will be to move some of those funds into our building fund to support the projects we already have in place. Um, other than that, pretty standard on our other special funds. All right, um, the upcoming governor's may revision for fiscal year 2526 will provide projected, updated projections that may impact district funding. Potential adjustments will be made based on state funding changes and enrollment trends. The district will continue to evaluate financial priorities to ensure long-term fiscal stability while maintaining support for our student programs. I'm going to back up because one thing I did not touch on, I apologize, is on the multi-year projections for there are big changes for next fiscal year. That is because um, when we were at first interim, we, the board had not approved the MOU for the new Valley Vista Public Waldorf Charter School for next year. Um, we now have used our current enrollment and our anticipated LCFF funding to update our um, multi-year projections. So there are um, larger, when you see the larger revenues and the larger expenditures, though I'm talking about funding going away, um, the big piece of that is the new charter school. All right, any questions? No questions? Very good. No questions? Okay.
Thank you very much. Very clear. Okay, now we go to comments from the public on special recognition reports, presentations, and non-agendized items. We have several tonight, all in different things. So I just need to read our, our language for public comment. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a three-minute per person limit or a twenty-minute limit per subject matter. Under Government Code five four nine five four point three A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items, period. That's now. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. While Government Code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy BP one three one two point one specific to complaints against employees. You can also submit your input in writing, by email, or other means to the superintendent, the board president, mcloud@petk12.org, board members, or other designated staff members. Okay. Our first speaker is Joe Buchak. Did I get that right? Thank you. Just a point of clarification. So this is kind of what your guidelines are when, for your, for your position and what you do at school? Great. Thank you. Oh, Medea. Okay, Patty Pacheco.
Good evening. My name is Patty Pacheco. I am the vice president for CSCA Chapter two one two. And I'm, I'm also a community stakeholder with children who attended PCS schools and graduated from Casa Grande. Thanks to the exceptional education they received at Casa Grande, both of my kids successfully continued their studies in UC Davis and Cal Poly. I am here tonight to address the ongoing contract and possible extension with North Bay Security. I have served as a campus supervisor, student advisor at Petaluma High School for six years, working as part of a dedicated team of three full-time student advisors. We engage in critical meetings such as re-entries, IEPs, SARTs, and student searches. We connect with all of our students during regular one-on-one check-ins, passing them in the hallways, or simply greeting them during morning and lunch. Our daily communication with teachers, case managers, counselors is vital in supporting our students. We are one of the trusted adults for our twelve hundred and sixty-three students as an essential presence on our campus every single day. We also serve as the first responders for students in various crises, confronting serious issues such as self-harm, suicidal thoughts, drug incidents, and homelessness. We are very much more than just a patrol. We are the heartbeat of our school, and we take pride in the ability to connect deeply with the student body and address the unique circumstances. We have built the trust, especially with most of our at-risk students, successfully monitoring and mentoring and steering them clear of gang and drug activities and turning their lives around. From my observation at PHS, North Bay provides a mere ten-minute walkthrough of the campus during nutritional break or shortly after, then they leave. This is simply not sufficient. This board must recognize the immense value that student advisors bring to our campus. I recommend diverting the funds to hire additional student advisors rather than extending the contract with North Bay Security. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Marcy.
Good evening, valued members of the school board and cabinet. My name is Jessica Marcy, and I am the president of the Classified Union for our PCS Chapter two twelve. I come before you today to speak on behalf of the classified staff, who, like many others, are deeply committed to the success and well-being of our students at Petaluma City Schools. As you know, both the Classified Union, CSEA, and the Certified Union, PFT, are currently engaged in negotiations with the district. I would like to take a moment to address an issue that is of great concern to us and one that has the potential to impact the long-term health of our district. We understand that the district has expressed an interest in maintaining, well, the board has expressed an interest in maintaining wage and benefit parity between the two unions. While this may sound fair on the surface, I must respectfully point out that equal does not always mean equitable. The financial reality is that the cost of one percent for the teachers' union is significantly higher than the cost of one percent for the classified union, about fifty percent more. That means that by default, when both unions are offered the same percentage increase in wages and benefits, the teachers always receive at least twice as much as the classified staff. While we fully recognize the unique challenges and responsibilities faced by our teachers, especially given the advanced educational requirements they must meet and maintain, this structure is inherently unequal and inequitable. We are not asking for anything that undermines the efforts of our teachers, but we are urging the school board to reconsider how funds are being allocated for classified staff. Many of us who are dedicated to supporting our students and teachers every single day are finding it increasingly difficult to sustain our families and lives here in Sonoma County due to wages that do not align with the cost of living. While the COLA is a step in the right direction, it remains disproportionately larger for our teachers, leaving many classified staff members struggling to make ends meet. This pay disparity has contributed to a growing problem with retention. While we continue contracting out work that can be done by classified members, we are losing good, hard-working employees, many of whom have dedicated years of service to this district because the wages have been dispersed elsewhere, and what's left simply doesn't provide a viable path for them to continue living and working in this community. As it stands, the current compensation structure is not sustainable for classified staff, and we fear that this trend will only worsen unless we take immediate action. PCS needs classified staff. We are your supervision, your greeters, your emotional connections with students, in some cases, your legal requirement, special ed instructional aides, yard duty for recess ratios, and much more. With all due respect, we ask that the school board begin reserving more funds for classified employees to ensure that we can retain the talented, dedicated staff who work tirelessly behind the scenes to make a difference in the lives of our students. This could be achieved by revising the board's decision to maintain ten percent in-year reserves versus the state-mandated three percent. Our work is just as vital to the success of this district, and it's time for our contributions to be more equitably recognized. Thank you for your time, your attention, and your continued support of the students and staff at PCS. We are hopeful that together we can find a solution that fosters fairness and sustainability for everyone in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Gallagher.
Good evening, Petaluma City School District Board and Community. In April twenty twenty-four, Superintendent Matthew Harris and the Petaluma City School District Board publicly promised to do everything to get the Casa Grande cell tower removed as soon as possible. Over the summer, Crown Castle and T-Mobile filed an application for a conditional use permit to legalize the cell tower with the city of Petaluma. After submitting and receiving numerous PRAs over the course of the past five months, we see that the application is still awaiting approval or denial from the Petaluma City School District. The PRAs revealed that Crown Castle is only seeking a minor modification to their long-existing facility, therefore qualifying as a minor project, which receives only administrative review rather than the public hearing process required of major projects such as a brand-new cell tower. This is unacceptable because T-Mobile and Crown Castle never applied for an original permit to allow the construction and the operation of this industrial cell tower when it was new. The Petaluma code enforcement hasn't enforced their laws. The city, the school district, Crown Castle, and T-Mobile are ignoring the city's zoning and planning process entirely. And now Crown Castle wants to be rewarded with a quick shot of approval outside public scrutiny because of the illegal tower already exists. I urge the Petaluma City School District Board members, Acting Superintendent, and Chief Business Official Amanda to promise not to sign the letter of authorization for Crown Castle and to proceed with its application. The illegal cell tower should be turned off immediately at minimum. Industrial cell towers are being banned from schools across the state and across the country with new ordinances restricting towers from being installed within specific distances from school properties. The Petaluma City School District Board unanimously voted to remove the tower, wrote to T-Mobile to terminate the lease, and requested that the tower be taken down, removed, and be powered down and removed.
You have thirty seconds.
Now that the approval or denial of an application is in your hands, what will you do? Adhere to your public promises or allow the illegal cell tower to be approved after seventeen years of operating illegally on your property? Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Sandra Larson.
Hello, my name is Sandra Larson, and I am the president of the Petaluma Federation of Teachers and a longtime Petaluma resident. I'm speaking tonight about a remark made at a board meeting two weeks ago while discussing budget cuts. At that meeting, the communications director was given sole credit for maintaining our enrollment. This was not the first time this statement has been made. It was first stated by our superintendent, Matthew Harris, last year. We didn't address it at that time, but it was still, but it was surprising when the misleading statement was repeated. I immediately heard from our members who were at the meeting, those watching online, and it spread throughout the membership within a few days. Hopefully, we can all acknowledge that the work of all district employees is why we've kept our enrollment steady. I want to acknowledge the work of our CSEA brothers and sisters. Our students come to a clean, well-maintained campuses. When parents make their first contact to a school, they are most likely greeted by a kind and caring office manager or attendance clerk. Their, their children have relationships with aides, student advisors, elementary librarians, just to name a few. Site leadership is essential to our, for our schools to thrive, and we have dedicated leaders who work tirelessly to ensure that staff and students are safe and happy so that learning can happen. The same goes for district administration. Their work is vital to our district's success, and I want to emphasize that the ongoing work of the board also contributes significantly to our enrollment. Your efforts are recognized and appreciated. I am fortunate to represent over four hundred PFT members. I know how hard they work and their dedication to their students. They greet students every morning with a smile and work hard to establish relationships with their students and families. They work to deliver the curriculum and services to all PCS students. They ensure our students have experiences outside the classroom and prepare them for their future. We've all heard about the critical work of our nurses at the last few meetings. Every time I walk into a school, I feel energy and see evidence of learning everywhere. As a board, your words carry significant weight. When giving credit, please be mindful that the collective effort of every single PCS employee, including the communications coordinator, is the collect, it is their collective and, and hard work and dedication that has enabled for us to maintain our enrollment. Let's ensure that all contributions are carefully recognized and appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have a comment that they'd like to submit or come up? Okay, thank you very much. Okay. We need a motion to adopt and approve the agenda.
I move to adopt and approve the agenda.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Okay, we have reports on activities and correspondence of our school board members. We've been pretty busy. We went to the PHS baseball game in San Anselmo. We soaked a senior. Did you get soaked?
It was our, like, pre-fundraiser to TQ. So all the TQ guys were in a circle in our quad, and people got to pay to get like a bucket or like a cup of water. And it went surprisingly like super, super well. So we're going to do it again next year when they're having TQ.
Very good. Sounds fun. Thank you. And then the TQ live show, when is it?
It already happened.
Oh, it happened?
Yep.
Oh, my God.
It's actually, if you want to watch it, it's on Trojan Broadcast Channel, the whole thing. And this year, they filmed it so well. It's, the quality is amazing. They have different angles and all that, and it went great. Mr. Dosery said it was the best one he's seen yet, so I don't know.
Very good. Okay, then we had office hours at San Antonio, the PHS play, which was office hours at Mary Collins, Agenda Review, Black History Month talks at PHS, Alternative Education Discussion, La Cien Youth Perspectives event. That was cool. Alt Ed Committee, Climate and Environmental Literacy Committee, and Grant Office Hours. Does anybody want to talk about anything that you did?
Yeah, I wanted to mention the La Cien event. There were like five or six students. One of them was from Petaluma High School. So I just wanted to bring back what she shared. She talked, like, so the first thing that she mentioned was resources and how there seems to be like a lack of resources for certain students. But on the flip side, she also feels like there's so much access to AP and honors classes at Petaluma High. She also was just like emphasizing that a lot of students could benefit from more college counseling. And then the last thing was committees, like having students more involved in our various district committees. So those were the, the main things that she mentioned.
Thank you. That's cool. Anybody else? Okay, we have comments from the public on consent items. Do we have anybody? Seeing none, we continue to, approval of the consent agenda by consolidated motion. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about the consent agenda? Oh, my God. Okay. All right. All those in favor of passing the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those, it passes. Okay, comments from the public on action items? Does anybody, seeing none, we continue with the action items. Fifteen point one point one, board meeting dates for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Thank you. We ask for the board's approval of the calendar of board meetings for twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And just of note, we have left some official second meeting dates off so that if we decide we want to have a study session, we'll have a little bit more flexibility in scheduling those because I'm, there's another agenda item where I'm going to ask you to look at study session meetings. So we ask for your approval of the board meeting calendar. And should something come up as we move forward, if we need to change a date much in advance, we can always. And should something come up as we move forward, if we need to change a date much in advance, we can always do that.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about...
Just wanna thank Ryan for bringing up the suggestion of holding the dates for the study sessions so that hopefully next year we don't have to try to scramble to find an additional date, so.
Yeah, for sure.
It's all good.
Yes. Did you have a question?
No.
Oh, okay. I need a motion?
Good.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Make one suggestion.
Oh, did you want to? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Over here, we do legally have to have our December meeting before December fifteenth for first interim. So we need that second Tuesday added, please.
I moved... Can I move to amend the calendar?
Amanda, could we just move back from the, I'm not sure, the date of the sixteenth, but could we just move back to the fifteenth instead of putting a second meeting in?
If it has to do, we don't have, but we won't have anybody up next year, correct?
No, hopefully not.
Yeah, so we, I think, but maybe double check.
Can we just move it to the Tuesday before?
That's what I was gonna do, move to move it to the December ninth of twenty-twenty-five, not twenty-twenty-four anyway. So we have to change it anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, I move, yeah.
Yeah, so the ninth?
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion?
I moved.
You moved. Do I have a second? Okay. All those in favor of amending the date for the board meeting in December to December ninth, twenty-twenty-five?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And you're welcome. December.
I move to approve the schedule of board meeting dates as amended.
I second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the motion passes. We have an amended calendar, forty days. I can't believe it.
Thank you very much.
Twenty-twenty-six. Okay. Our next is Resolution two-four-two-five dash four-one, declaring the month of April as Arab American Heritage Month.
We bring, we bring this, do you do this? Oh, sorry. Go ahead. No, please.
Go ahead.
I was just saying, we bring this, I believe we brought this resolution to the board last year. And I just appreciate the fact that the board really thinks about these every month when we come up and we have Heritage Months. I'm just appreciative that the board recognizes that.
I would like it read into the... Ava?
When these things are, like, declared, is there anything else, like, done in the schools to, like, celebrate or, like, acknowledge, like, the students?
Great question.
That's actually a great question. And one of the, I know when we were looking at... I wanna say when we were talking about Martin Luther King Junior recognition, I did reach out and just see what libraries, what do we provide for students to have access to that material? And one of the topics that was discussed was what we do in our libraries so that we have that kind of being displayed at all of our school sites. But I haven't checked for this one specifically, but generally, I think our libraries are great resources, and our librarians are very, very aware of the Heritage Months. And I don't know if our other cabinet members wanna share anything, but I do feel like our libraries are key places where that information is shared.
What about the kids who don't go to the library? Not everybody's up in the library. Sorry, Tony, were you gonna say something?
And, you know, I mean, you bring up a good question because it's something that we definitely can follow up with the school sites with, especially with our site administration, to see how they can further, you know, bring this to their sites and recognize it not just at a board meeting, but also at the site. So we can gather more information about what sites might be doing specifically and then help support them with more resources and/or activities that could help really add more strength to the resolution.
And I would just like to say I appreciate a library, okay? As someone who loves to read. But I think, like, that's where elementary schools do such a great job because, like, all the kids filter through the library. But then when we look at, like, secondary, what's the outreach? I know previously it's been put in, like, the PCS newsletter, like, here's the resolution, and just like encouraging, like Tony's saying, our sites to implement some curriculum or at least recognize it within, like, their school newsletters as well.
I would just add for this one, it's a way newer one. I think it only entered the zeitgeist in, like, twenty-seventeen, so more support for staff is gonna be helpful because some of them have been around a lot longer. But Arab American Heritage is, yeah, well, we'll see if the feds do it again this year, but.
Do I have someone who would like to read this into the record? Okay? Thank you. Whereas April is Arab American Heritage Month, established by the US Congress to recognize the more than three-point-five-million Arab Americans across the United States who have helped to move our nation forward, embodying the truth that diversity has been and always will be our country's greatest strength. And whereas people with Arab heritage were among the many immigrants who came to our country's shores with a range of cultures, customs, backgrounds, and beliefs, and have contributed significantly in the US history through their contributions in sciences, arts, government, and commerce. And whereas Arab Americans have continued to, I'm sorry. Whereas Arab Americans have contributed to every aspect of American society and are recognized for achievements in education, social services, public safety, health, business, fine arts, entertainment, science, politics, law, engineering, technology, and more. And whereas Arab Americans continue to be the victims of bias and discrimination, including harassment, hate crimes, racist rhetoric, and violent attacks. And whereas core values in the governance of Petaluma City Schools include the beliefs that all students reach high levels of achievement through rigorous and culturally relevant curriculum, and diversity is an asset that strengthens and enriches our learning community. And whereas the Petaluma... Whereas the Petaluma City Schools Board of Education recognizes that each student needs an opportunity to understand the common humanity underlying all people, to develop pride in their own identity and heritage, and to understand, respect, and accept the identity and heritage of others. Now therefore, be it resolved, that Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School District's Board of Education does hereby recognize April as Arab American Heritage Month. Excellent. Thank you. Do I have a motion? To approve.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes. Resolution two-four-two-five dash four-one, declaring the month of April as Arab American Heritage Month is passed. Now we go to Business Services. Approval of the Petaluma City Elementary Joint Union High School District's Second Interim Report for twenty-four, twenty-five. Do you have anything else to say?
No, thank you.
Okay. You have a second? No one's approving the budget?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we have a second interim approval. Thank you. Approval of Resolution two-four-two-five dash four-zero, consolidating bond and parcel tax citizens oversight committees. Amanda?
All right, thank you. Tonight, we bring forward Resolution twenty-four dash twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five dash forty for consolidating our bond and parcel citizens oversight committees. I want to point out that these are the committees that meet to discuss the annual audits after it happens. These are not the committees that make the decisions. They just ensure compliance. We have a really hard time getting a quorum for both of our committees. We actually had to cancel our bond oversight committee last week because we did not have a quorum for that. Right now, our committees have most of the same members. So what this would do, it would be able to consolidate it all into one meeting. This resolution did come from DWK Legal, so it is legal to do.
Okay.
I think my only question was going to be, I mean, since it's legal, it's fine. I know that, like, the parcel tax and the bond had different, like, the taxpayer representative or, like, the parent representative, are those the same for both already? Or is that gonna be a hiccup at all?
That's a great question. We do treat them the same. There are statutory requirements for bond oversight, but there actually is not a statutory requirement for parcel tax oversight, so we will follow the bond.
Excellent. Anything else? Okay, do I have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution forty.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, Tony, overnight field trip request.
Yeah, this is a request for the softball team. They were invited to play in a tournament. I think one of sixteen teams that were invited. So they're just asking for approval for them to participate in the softball tournament.
That's great. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor, sorry, I need a motion.
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the overnight field trip request passes. Thank you.
Okay, now.
Comments from the public on discussion information item? Okay, meeting dates for study sessions is our first item.
All righty, back again with dates. So we have some study sessions that we'd like to host with our Board of Trustees. So there's three that we wanna bring to your attention, and two, we have some tentative dates. So we want to have a study session on our alternative education programming. Another possible study session, but we may be able to put it on the next board meeting, is our facilities master plan. And then the third study session, well, sorry, study session, we have a governance... A governance training because our governance handbook, we have a draft, and we wanna bring it to the board for your review and ultimately your acceptance. So we were looking at the date for the governance training. And Tony, I think you were working with Babs also. It would be before our May sixth board meeting. So we were thinking of doing it from four to five PM, if that works for the trustees. And then we'd have our closed session from five to six, and then we would have our board meeting, our regular board meeting, starting at six PM. That is, I believe it's the sixth, but I'm gonna double check right now. Tony, do you have that date in your calendar, but I'm gonna look right now, too?
That's a date for our board meeting.
Right, so we were...
So that's where.
Yeah, so we were thinking of doing it from four to five PM, if that works for the trustees. It does mean, obviously, getting here earlier, and so I'm sensitive to that. And if not, we can look at another date or time. Yeah. Caitlin, I'm kinda thinking about your work schedule. Okay, and Ryan, you're good with that?
Joanna, you're...
I do not have my work schedule.
Okay, okay. If the date doesn't work, please just let me know, and we can come back with another recommendation. So May sixth, and then we were looking at study session for Alt Ed. Interestingly, we have a task force or a committee meeting for Alt Ed on April twenty-second. It's the same day as our board meeting. So what Esmeralda and I were touching base on this. Usually, the Alt Ed Task Force or the meeting is usually at three-thirty. So we're wondering, and Maddie knows, Maddie goes to these regularly. We were wondering if it would be possible to start at three-fifteen and go for about two hours. It'll be a long day and evening for our trustees, so I'm sensitive to that, too, if we want a different date. But we thought on that date, because it's already on everybody's calendars, our secondary admin, of course, Justin Morey and Greg Stevenson, we also have counselors that plan to come to that meeting. It might be easiest because it's already on their calendar.
April twenty-second?
That is April, April twenty-second. We're thinking, usually the meeting starts at three-thirty, but we didn't know if an hour and a half would be enough time because we really wanna dig into the data and just have some time for that study session. But I have to confirm that, too, with our educators. If that can't work, we can look at another date. What's this? I'm sorry.
Yeah, Michael.
The high schools don't get out till three-twenty. I'm not sure what time the alt sites get out, though.
The alt ed sites get out slightly earlier, so Carpe and Sonoma Mountain, two-forty-five-ish, and then San Antonio around two. And so then our administrators from the comprehensive high schools, and then fully one of their counselors would join us. Maybe could come just a few minutes before dismissal.
So if that looks, I know that Ryan, you need to track, not a problem. But if we wanna tentatively schedule that, and we can send out calendar invites on that, too. So that would be alt ed. And then the last one that we're looking to schedule is our facilities master plan presentation. And Amanda really would like that scheduled sooner rather than later. So we were thinking that we could bring it to the board meeting, but it's gonna take a good couple hours, couple hours. And so we could schedule it for the next board meeting and try to put off any items that we don't absolutely have to have at that board meeting so that we could do the facilities master plan. But I take direction from you. If you feel like we need to have a special session on that, we could look for that date, too. But we are hoping we could try to just get it done during the board meeting.
I would prefer a special session, so that way, if it takes, if there's lots of questions, you know, we won't be here till midnight.
Sure, sure. Amanda, do you want, what's your recommendation? Or do you have any dates in mind that we might be able to do this?
I, DTA is trying to hold open, so DTA will come and do the presenting. They're trying to hold open their evenings until we can make a decision. We cannot move forward with finalizing the facilities master plan, which is needed for any proposition to matching grants. So we do, we wanna get this done.
Would the trustees consider having an evening meeting, like a six to eight PM or a five to seven PM? Bree, do you have any dates you can, or Amanda?
The twenty-fourth is, I mean, the twenty-sixth is a safety meeting. At least I have that in my calendar.
Yeah, we're having parent panels that night, yeah.
I don't know about the twenty-fourth. I mean, instead of, I don't know, it just seems like it's risky if we have a lot of things that need to be...
Yeah.
...business, you know?
What about, would the, would the twenty-fourth work?
On Monday? No.
I was looking at March.
It's the day before the meeting, board meeting.
It's kind of a long week for you all, but if that's reasonable. Amanda, could you check with the architects and see if that, that might work?
You can do it? And you'll check?
He's gonna...
I will check. I have a pretty packed schedule for the rest of the month, so I don't, I cannot guarantee I would be able to attend.
Is there, is there a different timing?
I don't have anything. Sorry.
Trustee, you could just reach out to us, and if we have to move that meeting because you have something already calendared, we'll do that. So no worries.
What time are you proposing if it works out for everyone on the twenty-fourth?
I was, I was thinking five PM. I, five to seven, seven-thirty, or would it help to have it later for you all, like at six o'clock? What?
I would, too, but I know we're working with other folks' schedules, so I can do five or six start. I would too, but I know we're working with other folks' schedules, so I can do five or six start.
I can do five, later is definitely, like, five thirty or six is definitely a little easier, but I think I'm a little more.
Maybe we aim for five thirty and to see how it works for everybody. Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Do we get dinner?
And Amanda, we'll have to hear from the architects because that's obviously key to the whole thing here. Okay, awesome, thank you so much. Yeah.
Okay, we got it.
All right, uh, next step is our first reading of Board Bylaw nine two two three, filling vacancies.
Um, again, this isn't, this is an update um, for our board bylaws that essentially outline vacancies in the district and how we respond to those vacancies on the board. And it just outlines that the board must take action and it just depends too when the vacancy is announced, whether you hold a special election, whether you can appoint somebody, um, if that appointment is provisional. And all of that is documented in this uh, updated board bylaw. And this is just an information item, so if there's any questions or clarifications, happy to meet with you and further discuss. So that's.
I did notice one change on here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, under a board members, a number five, a board member ceasing to be an inhabitant of the state or resident of the district. So now that we're district trustee areas, um, I just wanted to make sure that we're all aware of that, so if we move across town.
Of the policy was due to the um, different trustee areas.
Yeah, what it was, okay.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, any questions about any of that? Okay, we now have a board bylaw nine two two zero, governing board elections.
And.
And then an exhibit also.
Yeah, this board bylaw, um, an exhibit, well, the exhibit essentially says what, what, if you've had any convictions or it outlines what um, disqualifies, disqualifies you from being a board member. The bylaw itself really outlines the policies and procedures for uh, the board elections. So it talks about eligibility, recall, consolidation, election process, campaign conduct, statement of qualifications and what happens if there is a tie vote. Um, so all of that is outlined in this board bylaw. And as we shared, the um, the exhibit is um, it's added to provide and a non-exhaustive list of offenses, um, the conviction of which makes somebody ineligible to be a school board member. So give it a look.
Forgery, forgery.
You know.
Thank you, all right. What's our next one? First reading of a board policy one 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 three, district and school websites.
Yes, and as.
And then a board policy and then an A R, right?
Yeah, and really they, they all go hand in hand, so I don't need to really go over all of them um, separately. But I was talking first to Amy and Dave, cybersecurity, the website, and as you all know, we have a new website. But what it's worth taking the time to do and Amy and I were um, talking during the break, is really going through the board policy and seeing exactly what needs to be on the website. Because personally, when I did a previous website, you, you have to keep being prompted to update things and make sure that you have everything on there according to what um, our board policy states. And same looking at cybersecurity and just being sensitive to what is outlined in the policy and making sure we're following that policy. And those are all outlined again, new um, I was just looking here, let me see one quick thing. Uh, yeah, there's different regulations and new laws that outline what needs to be and it, obviously it changes almost every year, so it's worth taking a look at.
Any questions? Okay.
Great.
Uh, next, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, we are going to Ed Services. First reading, board policy six one six one dash one, selection and evaluation of instructional materials.
Yeah, so this uh, this board policy is just updated from the C S B A language in regards to instructional materials and, and um, how we select instructional materials and the process for that. Uh, the A R um, gives a little bit more details around that as well as the input from the librarians who, who had um, um, contributed to, to some language around that policy and so that, that was included in the administrative regulation. Uh, but uh, this board policy, the, the B P itself is just a direct update from C S B A.
Is there anything that you would comment on that's different from before? Have you noticed that's significant that would require an update like this?
Um, I think the biggest difference is because our policy was, I think, from like twenty three, two thousand and three. Um, a lot, and it's such a, in, this particular one is quite lengthy. Uh, because I, there's, you know, we spend a lot of millions of dollars when we adopt instructional materials. And so that process needs to be transparent, clear, um, that the, the community has the right to come and inspect whatever the committee has decided, so that families and community partners know what uh, are, uh, what is being considered for adoption and what, and, and their feedback on that um, is also important, so. It's, it's, it's probably one of the longer prop policies that we've had. Um, so, but um, but because of the, the nature of it and because of ensuring that all students have access to the instructional materials um, and the amount of money that we typically spend, um, uh, it's important to lay out all that uh, clarity around the transparency of it.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Um, so that would be, then the next one is board policy one three one two point two, complaints, complaints concerning instructional materials.
Yes, so this board policy is again, just an update from C S B A and it's uh, and you know, there's significant changes uh, around the procedures for, for handling complaints and for appealing complaints. If, if the, the um, person who made the complaint isn't satisfied with the resolution, that there's steps to, to resolve that in, in a fair and transparent manner. Uh, as well, the A R also contains some language that the librarians had also um, created, uh, so that we uh, can reflect that as well. Uh, but it's just really focusing around ensuring that we have a transparent, fair process um, to handle complaints around our instructional materials.
Excellent. Anything come up for anybody? Okay, quickly going to the next, first reading, board policy zero four six zero, local control and accountability plan.
Uh, this is just, uh, typically we do an update for our L cap um, policy. We should do an L, L cap update policy every year within, if, when there's material changes. Uh, and this policy is just an update from C S B A, uh, really ensuring that um, um, that we, you know, include um, uh, community partners, uh, that if we have significant number of, of um, significant number of subgroups that they're represented in, in the L cap, that we go through the process of ensuring that uh, community partners have a voice or say, uh, are aware of, you know, the process and what's kind of uh, the topics and being, what's being decided on. That students also have a voice um, as a part of the L cap process and making sure that it's as clear and transparent as we possibly can and, and to include as many of our community partners as possible, especially our parent community, uh, and especially our parent community that's representative of unduplicated students.
Um, Tony, it says, um, an unduplicated student is a student who's eligible for free or reduced price meals.
Correct.
Since we're, we're now just feeding kids, are they still turning in those forms? Has that become an issue?
We are now a provision two district, meaning they need to submit, we still need to submit the lunch applications once every three years um, to maintain our reimbursements for state and federal C Nips. Um, each year we do allow families to complete an alternate income form, which actually is easier to um, complete. So the hope is, is that we in the future get more applications to help with the financial funding piece of it.
Yeah, I was just wondering if it, if it's become an issue since that has, lunches have changed.
Not yet.
It's not gonna win, hurry up. Not gonna win. Sorry. No, I had a question, but it's.
You sure?
Yeah.
You bet he is. Okay, well, we're done, are you sure? Okay, going on to future business. What's on the agenda for the next couple of months? Any suggestions? Ava?
I have a just a question. Some of my peers reached out to me about their, I don't even know if this is a district control thing or like by the school, but about chat G B T being unaccessible on school distributed devices. Um, their explanation for this is that students who are going to use artificial intelligence for the wrong reasons will find ways around the blocking on the computer. However, students have found like on their personal devices, pay like, asking it to like clarify, because a lot of the texts we look at at school can be really hard to understand at, at first glance, especially like honors and A P material. And so some students like to use chat G B T to say like, oh, explain this to an average eleventh grader. And so it helps people understand the material more and I have not many thoughts on this, but I just had students who were asking me about this and who should they reach out to and whatnot. I told them to come here tonight and try out public comment, but, you know.
Yes, not on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, I think that is a topic that we could touch on, the use of A I in schools and, and on A I property. Um, that is, you know, that is something that is. A top topic and, you know, I was just laughing, so I'm like, man, well, I would have given to have like, you know, Chancer translated into like, you know, modern English.
I think something though, that a lot of students are finding frustrating around this matter is that teachers are able, and it's, I do think to an extent like A I can be very helpful because a lot of teachers are able to delegate their tasks to say, have chat G B T, like make a lesson planner, like help them like write an assignment or even sometimes help grade assignments, but then students are frustrated with a double standard of the usage.
So then the, the, the students can't access it on their district devices, but the teachers can?
I'm not sure if they're using it on their district places, but I know a lot of teachers have, bring like multiple things to school and some teachers have used their individual devices and have it lined up, things are even like, say like modify this letter of recommendation or whatnot.
I also think students who have, bring their own devices, like are able to have it and then students who use the Chromebook School, like they, then they're not allowed to have it, so it's like, it's not, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought this up because I've been having side conversations with Dave about this, so. I would love to have um, a district update, because I know once upon a time we talked about everyone using the Chromebook, maybe like three years ago or something, but then it wasn't fully enforced and I understand like there's different levels of enforcement at each site, but then, like the students who, for example, sorry, I'm getting over cold, who are like bringing their MacBooks or their iPads, they can like text during class. Or they can, like you're saying, can access different things and other students are accessing, so it would just be good to skip that tech update period. I would also want to know specifically how many students are bringing their own devices? Because I know that some students might have the district Chromebook and they're bringing an iPad or their own MacBook. So then like, are we making sure that if a student is bringing their own device, that they're also not using a district device? Um, because if it's just sitting up under their bed collecting dust, then it's just a waste of money. So.
We can ask.
Superintendent.
So I think he has information that he probably would be interested in sharing, so we can add an agenda item to. He, we've already been talking about this, so I, I think it would be great for the trustees and for our student uh, board members to get an update on this. I think it's a pretty hot topic and very pertinent to what's happening, so um, we can put that on a, a, maybe even our March uh, twenty sixth board meeting, since we're not gonna be doing the master plan at that time, we could add that agenda item.
That was a good one, thank you.
Thank you, Ava, perfect.
Um, so. I met with Blue Zones on Friday and they were, I met, met, met with them. And they were asking, um, or they were letting me know about some of the things that they've been doing in our schools. And I was like, I had no idea about this, they did a big event at Casa last week apparently. Yeah, I know, oh, right. And um, so it would just be great to hear from them and so I did say I would mention it future business, I couldn't promise anything, but I would like to hear what they're doing on our school campuses. Because apparently they've been doing things. There and I just, not bad, I'm just like, oh, I know y'all were doing this and I have a kid at Casa, so. Um, it would, if we could just have, I don't know, set aside some time for them to present and then have a Q and A, so we can ask some follow up. So that was one and then I also wanted to know, um, a kind of a follow up to the presentation, the public comments. Um, how are utilizing our campus supervisors and student advisors for student safety? And how are those things supporting the efforts of North Bay Security? Or are they like being supplanted by North Bay Security? Or, um, because this is a two-year contract, so I understand it's gonna be for the next school year, but then after that, um, is there, if we don't have the funds to continue this, then is there some type of like further training we could do for our campus security and student advisors for things that maybe North Bay's doing? I mean, besides like the safety walkthroughs and stuff, I'm not sure, but like Patty spoke and like every time I go to Petaluma High School, like, I always see her, she's usually the first person there, so I know that like when she's saying like they meet and greet everyone, like, I find that to be true myself, but I would just like to know um, like what their tasks are in terms of safety.
And just to clarify, the contract for the security presence Monday through Friday ends on the last day of school. Our two-year contract is for the trainings and that, right? So the portion of them being in, in district five days a week ends and we don't have a new contract.
Well then, I guess, never mind.
Um, one thing to add, if, if you are wondering about um, those positions, we did actually negotiate with C S B A. We recently eliminated campus security, we moved all of the campus security positions into student advisor positions. Um, because that job description included, it was less about kind of policing and supervising, it was more about student advising. So we moved them all in, so if you did want an update, we would just update you on student advisors, because that's the only one we have left.
And we, we uh, had to cut to student advisors, correct?
Um, this, in this.
In this last budget.
Last year, we cut to, one student advisor at each of the high schools. This year, we approved the elimination of one, of a total of one F T E between uh, Cherry Valley and Pen Grove.
Okay, do they still have presence there for student advisors?
They do still have presence there, yeah. I, I think, I think in operation, it looks like we'll be reducing, because you can't reduce, you can't reduce positions, you can only cut positions and we can cut up to one point oh, so we are looking at eliminating point two at Pen Grove, which will leave them with a point eight, which is still pretty close to full time. And we're looking at eliminating a point four seven five at Cherry Valley, which will leave them with a one point oh.
So it might be really interesting to have like a comparison of the costs of the student advisors and now all of them together and, um, and then the North Bay. Just to kind of get a sense of uh, how much we're spending on each, it would, I, I would find that really helpful.
Okay, okay, one more, one more. It's about math and related to Tony's presentation about L cap. Yeah, so. Yeah, so there's the common assessments, which I don't want to give up on, but I'm frustrated, because two years ago, we were supposed to have. Yeah, I feel like we bring it up a lot, and so I just want to know what's going on with that in light of. You know, we're still, I'm looking forty-three points below standard on the dashboard. Um, and then when you look by subgroup, it's even more disparate. And then we just added the third year of math in um, in high school. And I know we talked about it in the fall, asking like what types of math supports we're going to have. So I just would want an update just on all things math, like where are we with the common assessment? If they're not done by the end of the year, can we bring on another pilot? And or what type of supports are we going to have? Because maybe, I don't know, common assessments is, if it, there's not buy-in, I don't know, but what type of other supports for that third year are we going to have for our students? Because we're still far below the standard.
Anything else? Okay, um, all right. I believe I have to adjourn this meeting, and then we call to order a new meeting. Is it, with that, that's the procedure, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so I am adjourning. I am adjourning our present meeting um, uh, at eight forty-four. And I am calling to order our special meeting. At eight forty-five. Um, and I need a uh, a motion to adopt and approve the agenda.
I move to adopt and approve the agenda.
A second.
Any comments from our public? You guys, you are hanging in. Okay, I see none. We go on to the action item, overnight field trip requests.
Yeah, so we we received a last minute overnight field trip uh, for a track meet, um, that's supposed to take place on the twenty first, which would. Um, come before our next board meeting, and so. You know, rather than denying the 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 students to participate, we wanted to uh, bring it to the board in the special board meeting to. To consider approval uh, for the students to to compete.
Do we have a? Motion? To approve the overnight field trip request.
I move to approve.
I'm sorry.
Oh, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
All those post? Seeing none, it, uh, the motion passes and we adjourn for the night. Thank you.